Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council regular meeting, Wednesday, November 16, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall dream room. Can we all stand up for the play?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two on our agenda is visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized? Sure, you've got a big crowd. All right. Item number three, approval of the minutes from the November 2nd, 2022 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
Omo.
A second? Any discussion?
Yeah, I wasn't here, but I watched the video of the meeting, so can I vote in?
No, you can't.
Okay.
I'll have to say.
You do? Oh, okay.
So we got.
Somebody second it or something?
We got a second, but we're not going to have enough.
Right, well, if you vote Chris, that's four.
One, two, three. He's got a.
You want to hold off and say Chris comes in and then do it?
You can approve the minutes later.
Table it.
Sure.
Table it. Table it later in the night.
Or day, next meeting. Let's just table it for the next meeting. Okay, let's do that. You good?
Yep.
Item number four, we have appointments this evening. We have Bruce Leidy for the Beautification Committee for a term until 6:30, 2024. Motion to approve. Seven, discussion.
Just one comment. Was this a fellow that was out in the beginning and then quit?
He's coming back strong.
I wish he was. He's rejuvenated. I asked him what changed his mind. Whatever, okay.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, okay. All right, that's probably right.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item, or the second item is for Robert Murdoch for the Economic Development Commission Alternancy for a term 6:30, 2023. He's replacing, who left? Uh, Dar.
Dar.
Dar, okay. So just replace him. Second?
Yeah, second, true.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Bob, see how easy that was?
Totally was easier.
You want to come, is that Bob? That's mine right here.
He thought you were going to have to do a lot of drilling.
Don't forget though, you're a new guy, so. Keep your hand out. New guys always get the jobs.
No, that's nice.
This is the easiest part.
Glad to see that you mean.
All right, item, moving on to item number five. So this is going to be a discussion on transportation alternatives. Set aside grants for sidewalk renovations and extension on West Main Street.
In the agenda packet, we have the grant submittal that was sent in to the COG back in 2019 by First Akma. Gives you an overview of what he intended. The goals of the project were, there's a site map, which basically has a new sidewalk going from John Street Extension next to CBS out to Lumberyard Road, which is just shy of where Connecticut Water sits. At the time, the project was cost estimated to be $865,000. As you can see, the letter that was in the agenda packet, a commitment was being made at that time for the town fund 20% of that project, which is $170,000 or so. The project was ultimately not approved by the COG and DOT. So the project never went forward and the demand for the commitment of funding was never necessary. However, with new monies floating in under the, I think it was the Inflation Act, that included additional money for infrastructure, so now the state has new money under transportation alternatives, which they didn't have before. So rather than opening up to a new competitive round to rate and rank and go through all those applications, the DOT thought it was just going to be simpler to go through projects that did not pass muster in the first going round. Look at them, see if the towns are interested in proceeding, and if they are, then it would go into this new funding mix. Obviously, the cost of the project would need to be updated and drilled down a little bit because these numbers are somewhat dated at this point in time. The engineering firm that is consulting with the DOT did offer an opinion on what the project might cost now. These numbers, the original numbers that were in the application, did not include the cost for design, which either was an oversight at the time or that the town was going to pay for that separately. I don't know what the full-farm process was in 2019. That predates me. Based on the last sidewalk project, it did go through the COG, which goes towards Stockton Shop. Design was also not included in that grant, and public works was able to call together money that paid for engineering, but it wasn't fully called out, so I would imagine that was probably the same process here. So the project goes from $865,000 using current pricing to $1.9 million. Design would be estimated at $325,000. And what we don't know is whether or not there's any right-of-way acquisition required. With the sidewalk project that went out towards Stockton Shop, there was a significant right-of-way acquisition required because there's just not enough public right-of-way to install sidewalk. The design did envision some relocation of utilities, which is not included in the original cost estimate either. So if you put in new numbers for construction, an assumption for design, and an assumption for utility relocation, and any kind of right-of-way acquisition needed, takes the project up to a little shy of $2.4 million, of which $1.9 would be from the feds, and the town would have to put in a contribution of $475,000. The design standard for this sidewalk. The municipal, the federal side is $1.9 million. The municipal 20% share is $475,000. The design standard would be mirroring the downtown area and what the sidewalk looks like, basically from Hall Street down to the Indian River Bridge, which is granite curving, decorative streetlights, sort of that brick strip between the curving of the sidewalk and then sidewalk. If it was the town's desire, we can always change and value engineer some of that stuff out to reduce the cost of the project, but we cannot change the location of the sidewalk. So if we want to proceed with this, we would be proceeding, and then we're on the hook for 20% of whatever the result of the project costs is. We can always tell the DOT we're not interested, no harm or foul, and we pass on this, and if there's a different area for sidewalks, then we would have to put together an application for that, whatever transportation alternatives has funding against. So it's really sort of a question of the evening, is there a desire to move forward with this? The challenge I can see immediately on the municipal side is unless that dollar amounts in the budget under the charter, that's going to require a referendum. If it exceeds $300,000, does that charter catch that? So that would be a referendum vote for the 475.
To start this project, Carl, we had to first put up all the whole two points up to Maine, and then we'd get reimbursed from the feds later. Is that how it works?
Any kind of mirrors that process? You have the bridges, so that's the least of our problems. Little bit cash flow side of it. It's coming up with 20%, and how that gets.
From AEP 7773, which is a pretty big strip, draw the sidewalks if I need some construction. And I gather as a PNC, as a DOT, asked to do construction for the main sidewalk? Or are there discharges?
Probably would have been PNC as an off-site improvement, but those areas, the curving is, along the stretch of the curving, sort of a mix. In some places, it's concrete, in some places it's asphalt, in other places it's non-existent. So.
Yeah, just that area.
You would be lining it with some, some kind of consistent curving, but only on the north side. On the south side, kind of mirrors the hightech. You could value engineer out the brick. You could value engineer out the granite curbing and go with a precast concrete curb or a reinforced concrete curb. Costs obviously have ballooned significantly over where they were when this was originally cost estimated, so. Where do you want to go, if anywhere?
Is there any way that we can sort of shorten the length of the sidewalks I was wanting to do? Instead of going all the way down to Lumberyard, can we stop, let's say, at where it comes down, North Ty Street, I guess the referendums is, or was? Can we stop there? I mean, you know, I agree that sort of, you know, sidewalks need attention from CBS going west, but I don't know if the town can afford to build that high in this particular moment.
There's some spots that are really curious with this. Would you go through the layers of property? A gas station where it's all parked?
That's the other side, yeah.
No, it is.
Oh, that's on that side.
You've got a couple of curious areas where it looks like there isn't, there isn't a curb reveal that's left, so either there was no, the apron wasn't lifted, there wasn't a defined apron, or if there was a curb reveal, the curb reveal is now lost to the ages. So there's a couple of curious properties that you've got to figure out how that would, how that would work and how that would ultimately look. Question is, are we interested, or are we interested only as a price point? How do we find a local match is, is going to be a problem unless it's wrapped up in the budget, or you've got to V the project now where the municipal base is only $300,000, which you could, unless you want to put it up. Which would be the budget, I guess, is the next election.
Since there is already this stuff revealed too, how to, I mean, they can't tear up those two sidewalks and do it again. I mean, that's crazy.
That's what was envisioned here. That's what was envisioned here.
Although, some consultants came after that.
Correct, but you're ripping it up because you're supposed to be laying the decorative brick between the curb and the sidewalk. So that's kind of like, if you were inclined to do this, we'd have to kind of really rethink scope a little bit for, you make it more like how it is down here, where you don't have the brick, the grass strip. This is a scene that would be larger, more expensive project than was originally envisioned three years ago. And that doesn't include DOT's desire, which would be to carry it further along to connect to the bus stop across from Dunkin' Donuts. So the state has an interest in seeing the scope longer than shorter, and then you do one side of the street, and obviously it makes the question of doing the other side of the street, which I think we know for part of it, there's not a right-of-way, so you definitely have right-of-way acquisition costs that would balloon the stretch as you cut into the CBS.
Mr. Five, give me for a second. Dunkin' Donuts?
McDonald's.
Oh, McDonald's, okay. Anyone?
There's a bus stop across from Dunkin' Donuts, McDonald's, and.
Yeah, okay, that's further than what we get.
Correct, so that's, that's after Water Company, after the ball carts.
Okay.
Next place that's got the big, it's an fiberglass.
When do we have to give them the inch of code?
Sooner rather than later, because they want to make a decision on how many projects are in the loop. This only came out this summer recently, so if you needed more time, I can certainly close the loop back with consulting years, and then we've got to deliberate on it.
We have to take the whole thing from down to up here?
The span had to be accepted. Shortening a span is not a question I ask. If you wanted to shorten it, that would be a conversation that we have to have, if that's not.
So like, is consensus, like, what do we, a lot of money, and it's kind of, I mean, if the project stays as it is with those numbers, it's going to be a referendum vote because our part's going to be over $300,000.
I think some of those places are going to be.
Do we have, do we ask Chris these few, maybe that is brandy, us pointing, everything that we've got?
I mean, that would be one of the things he's, yeah, you talk about.
Well, they would be, what you would do is.
But how much is that going to save?
That is what I'm wondering, is if you, if it doesn't work, why are you doing anything?
I mean, because they're doing decorative lights, you know, so I mean, there's costs associated with the lights.
Yeah, there's costs associated with the lights. The granite curving is higher end finish, obviously, so there's another curving you could do. So some of the downtown area has concrete curve around the granite. In and around the CBS, a lot of that, and the train station, that's concrete. It's, the materials in the area is kind of a mixed bag, so you'd have to, if there was an interest, you could VE it, but it's a matter of how much, how much you can compress that price. And then the design, that would be funny, that we would have to figure out where to bunch up the design from. Whether that's in, and having the feds pick up 8% of the design cost, or whether we carry on for some of the design cost in order to pull the project, total project cost down. So we'll put that back before this.
I would just think of so many other ways, if we're going to spend that kind of money, other, other projects to spend on rather than sidewalks in that particular area. I mean, East Main Street barely has any sidewalks, let alone dig up ones that were put there within the last five or 10 years and replace them with something more aesthetically pleasing. So this is, this is a yes or no. We either move forward with this particular project or it's off, we can't.
You can, monkey with the scope. You can't, you can't say. Correct, you can't say, I want to move it and put it over there. So you've got to kind of, oh, was that just? Where are we going?
That's the problem, right? Yeah, I mean, that's.
I hate to pull off the line this, and then I know that we. That's what the problem is.
But the problem is, right, that the commitment was for that area.
It's kind of curiosity, because having sidewalks up there increase the value of property that you want?
Yeah, so sidewalks are not a factor in your.
I mean, I got it, but I mean, a lot of money to spend is the best place for us to look to spend money and to do things that we want to do in town. So that's bottom line.
If you pass on it, we can get no harm, no foul, and it's not going to, you know, put a black mark against the town's name. It's just a planning or a fanny agency. If the desire is yes, but we need it down, you know, obviously, we've got to kind of figure out what the goal key is that we're shooting for in order to get a number down that makes.
Well, I mean, I think if we get it down to the number where we don't have to have a referendum, would be a bigger problem, because you'd have probably a lot of people at that last, where they're spending that kind of money on sidewalks. Because it is a good chunk, even if we get to 300, and we just, you know, bypass the referendum because the council can act on that, so. That's the other thing that I'm sure we'll hear about. Just a lot of money.
So I guess what I'm hearing from you is, we have to get our portion right now, the R 20% has to be less than $300,000, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying if we don't want to go to a.
Not the whole project, but just our percentage of what we have to put in, is that correct, Carl?
Yeah, so you're going to have to appropriate your permanent shares of that, and that was never done when the application was made. So here, it looks like we will be strongly positioned for award, so where's, where's the local match going to come from? And if you go by the dollar amount center currently estimated, that's a lift inaccessible to charter, gives you guys the ability to do a town meeting. So anything in excess of 300 requires a referendum vote.
Got you.
So if it was your desire to go forward, you'd have to have a referendum vote with a budget vote in order to approve funding, unless you were going to wrap it up in the budget.
Yeah, that's, someone's half a million dollars, 175,000. That's a budget, and you just.
He doesn't take it.
That story, we've got something else.
This is a hard year, I guess, I mean, this is a hard year period.
And, okay, I don't think it's going to be the last time we'll hear, you know, this conversation, and talks about things we may be able to do in town. I mean, you know, so, like you said, if it's no harm, no foul, it's not something, the town's going to be a black eye because they can take the money, again, you know, it's been sitting out there, 19, it was high, you know, I mean, at that time, you'd think it would have gone differently, and the money was allocated at that point, and there was some, some money set aside from the point that that, that contract was engaged, and that commitment was engaged with the state, it'd be a little different, but there was nothing. It was committed, and that was it. And it sat there for three years.
You have this for Pearson property and East, I say yes, because that sidewalk is in terrible shape and what our plans are for Pearson would ruin, but it's not.
You'd have to make another application. Find a, find a different funding scheme.
I mean, I have to agree with you, Mr. Chairman, only in fact that at this particular moment, anything that impacts our budgets and takes money out of our taxpayers right now is, you know, we can't do, they're having a tough time meeting things now. Yeah, there's things that we need to do with that money, rather than, unfortunately, comes at the wrong time. That's it.
You came late, but you kind of get where we're going?
I get, I get it, yeah, I agree.
All right. Some more agreement we'll pass on this one?
Yeah, we're saving the time to do it.
Yep, some more, we got some more things for Carl to do, though. We got rid of that.
No, it's okay. Maybe somebody will come along and give us the whole vote.
All right. We'll move on to item number six, development goals for Pearson. So I guess at this point, we've obviously had some workshops, we've had conversations with the public, talked about the RFP, talked about, the council has a consensus on what we'd like to see, and I think Carl's just, I guess, needing some direction from us to say that is ultimately our position, after hearing some input from the public, that we would like to move forward with housing, senior housing, affordable housing, where we want listed, with facade, you know, people facade as it is, and some of the other things that we've discussed. I guess we can give him that direction, and he can kind of iron down the RFP that we'll be putting up to the public.
Yeah, I'm trying to finalize this, but I really need to, it's got to be an RFP for something and not an RFP for it's free-for-all, or it's a blank slate. You've got to kind of lay out something, whether it's how you're going to rate and rank these things, or a specific type of land use. So in this particular case, I'm more, or I'm going towards a specific kind of land use, and this mirrors the conversation that took place during the council's workshop. So I just want to make sure that this is raw, in alignment on what these goals can be, so that that informs the RFP. So it's, we're looking at acquisition of the property, either by direct purchase or long-term lease. Forty to 99 years as the ground lease is what long-term means, and that's terrain only to some of the affordable housing funding structures. The town will not provide financing for acquisition. We're open to other transaction structures based on whatever's the best interest of the taxpayer, property made available, and as is, there it is, how it is conditioned. We're not doing anything to the building prior to the associated with the income. Acquisition of the site should be intended for rented senior units, the lower-lotteried income households. The developer would tell us what the income mix would be. For the site, the town will only entertain proposals that involve the adaptive reuse of the structure, preserving the original 1932 facade for the original front building is a priority. We're not going to entertain proposals that involve demolition of the building, only adaptive reuse. The town wants to carve out a park allowing for the gazebo and the two bronze statues to maintain. We have to describe the area that we're interested in. And then, as was mentioned during the public meeting, the Church of the Holy Advent has a non-exclusive easement to allow access across the property. That easement does go away if the town sells the property. The easement stays in place if we lease the property. So I think just to continue being a good neighbor, we'd like the developer to continue to honor that, that easement going forward to the benefit of the church as long as it's there. So actually, you know, we're looking for a qualified developer who's got experience and capacity to develop a parcel based on these general goals, being sensitive to community standards and design aesthetics. We would reserve the right to put an affordable housing deed restriction on the property. That helps us towards some of those 830G standards, whether the town wants to pursue the moratorium at some point in time, or get to that 10% benchmark. It's got to be deed restricted, it can't just be generally affordable, it has to be locked up or something. And the design should be, you know, consistent with the neighborhood and the town making those decisions. The cake and eat it too concept, so we're trying to call it a public-private partnership. So we're interested in working with somebody that would continue some aspect of the building as public use for our community amenity, so trying to look at two bid options. One bid, option one for the bid would be outright acquisition, 100% use for housing, no community aspect. Option two is, tell me whether or not it's feasible, tell me how it's going to be feasible, tell me what we need, tell me what space it is, what the trade-offs are, what they're going to look for us for. So there's a lot more that needs to be fleshed out in option two for what that project's going to look like, and whether the town needs to participate in a capital stack or not. So that's, this is the part that I haven't heard this time, right? Just want to make sure we're still moving in that direction, and that the public use is senior programming and general community use, not incubator space, not some of the other things that were stated, but again, mirroring the council's conversation. And that's, you know, I want to know what those trade-offs are, what the transition structure would be in order to get the public-private partnership. If they say, yes, we'll give you X amount of more footage, but we need to put an addition on the building, that's something that we should know in our review process. So that's, if this is good, then this forms the, helps rattle up the RFP, so that it's, it mirrors an intention of where we want to go. If your desire is to make it more of a blank slate, I have to craft the RFP in a different direction. See what that, okay?
Yeah, when I read it through the first time, you know, option B, option two, I thought it was not as strong as I would have, you know, you know, my thought going in is ask, ask for the world and see what you get back. for the world and see what you get back, but now that I'm rereading it, I mean, I guess you're, you are asking for that, you know?
I'm asking for them to, instead of us saying, we want X square footage, I'm looking for them to tell me how much square footage could be spun off, because there's gonna be needs that they have, depending on how they work, they have unit yields that they're trying to get out of it, which is why, you know, if they lose developable space, they may want an addition, so just trying to let the developer tell us what that's gonna look like, and then, if we have competition, and they all respond to that, and that's the direction we wanna go, then you can look at what that option means for area, what the restrictions are, what the trade-offs are, what the financial contributions are, kinda what that's gonna look like, and then, then you know a little bit more of what's, what's doable, what's not doable. I didn't want it to find a specific space, because that could upset how the project gets, gets baked, so especially with the position of the elevator, that really kinda causes a problem for being able to declare, this bunch of space is gonna be, remain public, so they may have to move the elevator, that could force square footage.
Is it your experience that they might call you up and say, explain to me what we're, by that, or can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so in terms of process, so, in some ways, it would be like any other RFP that we issue, where there's a window, if you have any questions, reduce them in writing, send them in at some certain date, we'll send out responses to everybody that we know is a potential proposer at that point in time, then we get grid responses, because we're dealing with a physical property here, in this case, we would have a sidewalk with a developer, or developer groups to walk through, and then show them a variety, and then that would be an opportunity to have some of those questions raised, in order to get that information flushed out, and then, whatever the responses, we'll go there. So in terms of process, we would try and flag that, and have a forum where they could walk the property, and you have a little bit of dialogues, that there's an understanding of, kinda what the town is looking for, and the verbiage that would be in the RFP, which longer than it's here.
Okay.
Could this be on some of the real ones, or is this really sent out, proposed to developers?
Uh, it would be, so it's an official procurement, so we would have to put an ad in paper, but obviously, there's only gonna be certain types of developers that are gonna be interested in this, and while there may be entities that operate on a statewide level, they may not have the capacity or interest in being here, because they have no other footprint, one of the concerns that we're gonna be interested in is maintenance capacity, and what's the maintenance presence gonna be, is the maintenance presence gonna be somewhat local to Clinton, or is it gonna be coming out of New Haven, or Hartford, or wherever, New London, wherever, so those are gonna be things that you're gonna wanna understand with how you make a ward, or who's gonna be the day the property responds in this experience, so that may, contracting diverse of people to just have a certain geographic area, so you've got nonprofit developers that do housing, that are in Little Six County, that will conform some basis of it, some larger entities that are a little bit further out, so there's a pool of potential people that we would send proposals to, if they don't happen to catch it in the harbor.
That would be bad.
No offense. We might advertise in the register rather than the...
No offense.
Any other questions, everybody, be good with the scope of this?
Yeah, I think it's well-written, thank you, Carl.
Carl, will you address for, is there anything to address the fields in the back? There's so much property there.
Okay, so then, definitely need to be careful, so the property is over three acres, and we'll be conveying the whole thing, unless you wanna hold on to ball fields, in which case, it starts to look, I have to, I have to flag that, and obviously, everything, maintenance issues, and also, there is a sound system, there's, the infrastructure of the building is gonna be out in that ball field area, the playground area in the back, so if there's a desire, to try to move on to that, or that's option three, I kinda should know that now, so that I can...
I'm just curious if you were gonna address it, because it is...
I hadn't heard anything to that effect, and, you know, again, if developer can give you a square footage that the council's happy with, but issue going back in the building, you gotta lose fields, so you gotta say it, you gotta say it now.
You gotta park the issues.
You gotta park the issues.
We don't use those fields.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, not big enough.
No, it's, it's been used intermittently for sticker, and it's not that high a quality, you know, field in the first place.
Me and him, when he was a music, we had our, Jimmy Burris, he had his practice in there for giants.
Okay, a little different.
All right, so we, good? Good, good, good? Move forward?
Okay.
All right?
Yep, fine.
Tell that free time, that'll free you up on that. All right, item number five, seven, small town economic assistance, the Steve Grant uprising resolution for the radio communications upgrade project, we all have a copy of the resolution, so we'll probably read it, if we are good with that, we can make a motion to move forward with this.
Don't move.
Okay, any other further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Staying?
Thank you, and fastly, we'll move forward with that.
Item number eight is the finance director's report.
Hi, everybody, good evening, the results that you have are for the four months ending October thirty-first, and the total revenues for the month of October were two million one hundred ninety-one thousand, the majority of which was one point eight million in state grant receipts, the remaining three hundred thousand included two hundred twelve for tax revenues and a hundred thousand for town service revenues, the one point eight million for the state grant revenues included one million two hundred ninety-eight thousand, which is the first installment of the ECS, the education cost sharing grant, and two hundred eighty-eight thousand for the meaning stabilization grant, those amounts were received as budgeted and as expected. In addition, the town received a two hundred fifty-six thousand dollar state grant for municipal revenue sharing, that grant was not budgeted in fiscal twenty-three, as the state was not expected to have the excess funds available for the distribution to the towns for that grant, so that's an additional revenues for twenty-three. A hundred thousand of the town service revenues in October included fifty-seven thousand for town clerk revenues, and twenty-two of building fees, eight thousand for boat moorings, and six for police contractual. As of October thirty-first, the current tax levy collection rate is fifty-six point five percent, compared to fifty-five point nine the prior year, so slightly higher. Four-month year-to-date revenues are fifty-one point eight percent of the total fiscal year, twenty-three budget, compared to fifty point eight percent twenty-two, so slightly higher. Expenses for the month of October were three point seven million, two point seven is the education operating expenditure transfers, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand for salary fringe benefits, and the remaining three hundred thousand is further detailed in the report, which are the usual recurring expenses. Investment balances were thirty-three million as of October thirty-first, interest income for the month of October was thirty thousand dollars, and for the four months, it's eighty-four thousand dollars. To give you some perspective on the impact that the rate increases have had for the town, the investment income for the full year last year was only fifty-seven thousand, so we're already at eighty-four thousand. As noted in my written report, the earnings credit rate increases that the town has recently received from mainly the Bank of America have enabled us to offset all of the service charge expenses for the month of October, this is the first time in a couple of years that we've seen that, so that's a good thing, and the town is expected to receive additional increases of this earnings rate credit in November as well. Contingency and fund balance are unchanged from last month, and are detailed in the report provided. ARPA, as I mentioned last month, the beginning of October, we received the final payment of the one point two million, the ARPA funds, so we received everything that was promised to the town. As of early November, we've spent four hundred and twenty-nine thousand of that, that as well as detailed in a schedule in the report, which leaves three point four million available to spend, one point seven of that is for our town council to appropriate to projects, as I know you have under schedule to do. And as far as other projects that have been going on in our department this last month, we're still working on the audit, that's in process, we've responded to all the requests, so that's moving along, I believe they're working on the report at this point. The fiscal year twenty-four budget, all the departments have been given their department sheets, and their capital improvements that they also want to have considered, and they're to be returned by December twenty, December twenty-first. The police pension funds have been successfully switched, the new investment managers in the beginning of November. Debt financing, I've also been gathering information needed for the offering statement for the debt issuance that's gonna be taking place in early February twenty-three, and then lastly, everything I've been working on is treasury, Carl, I think he's gonna touch on this as well, we've met with the town treasurer, we've discussed different investing scenarios that would help further benefit the town with the recent, take advantage of the recent interest rate increases, I'm working on cash flow analysis to help further in that discussion, and we also have a meeting scheduled with the Bank of America, reveal the town's position with them, and we have the meeting scheduled for earlier December, so we're trying to bring in that in hand as well. I think it's very clear.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, item number nine, chairman's report, real quick, so no public hearing that was previously scheduled, but we've changed course, just make sure there's nothing on the agenda tomorrow, on the Dr. Pram, and then eleven twenty-one, which is Monday, we have the ARPA workshop, six o'clock here. Town meeting report.
If I refer for, so as Sue noted, the budget has been released to the departments, to work on the banking, to work on Steve Grant, the resolution that was on their agenda helps move along the pile of paper that came in from the state in order to get the grant moving, the radio communications project, Representative Corby did help release that after a fair amount of delay getting the actual documents, so there's a stack now that I've gotta respond back to the state with, so the state was going in the other direction, but we're running a bit more, because it's a little rise, so that's clearly taken priority of our mission, and we can get into contracting of the state as quickly as possible to be able to buy the equipment that we're looking to get. I did include in the agenda pack a letter from Congressman Courtney, who's supporting the town's effort in order to try and do either some maintenance level dredging, or full-blown proper dredge of Clayton Harbor within the Army Corps' venture years, annual budget preparation, there's some environmental testing that needs to be done, and there's a conversation going back and forth right now with the Army Corps, to see if we can get that, that work done while we wait for final determination of whether it's cleaning up the hot spots, or whether it's a full-blown dredge, so there's more to come on that, and hopefully, this could be federally funded, rather than putting the town contribution. So that's, there's more to come on that. As Sue noted, they, we did make a change with our police pension investments, this was to change the process by which we do what we do, increase the amount of fiduciary trading for those on the pension committee, get more efficiency in our investments, so at that point, getting similar deals, but at a lower, lower cost, which keeps more money at play for pension allocations, so Sue did her part, I had to do my stockbroker part of directing trades and filming outcomes, that one done, so we've finished the move, we are all square for the time being, and that's, that's now, thankfully, in a good spot. In addition to what I have in the written, I don't think it's in Sue's report, but there was funding provided to the town previously as part of an opioid settlement, so we had gotten a few dollars, just received our second check of eighty-eight hundred dollars, I think, which is an opioid settlement from one of the producers. That's short-term check, I think it'll go through for like another, it'll be a total of five years, then we'll be receiving that funding, and it is to be dedicated towards dealing with opioids, so it'll be more of a human services police-type pension project. There's a number of these cases going, previously, with the council, we did discuss the Jansen slash Johnson and Johnson settlement on opioids, this did not require the town to put together lots of documentation, which I think was suggested during that meeting, is just really signing up for it, so that, that's now come through this week, telling us what we can expect over the next five years, so it's laid out a capital formula, pretty much every town in Connecticut got on board with this, which was good, otherwise, we'd all gone to the state, and I think we're at the local level, so over the five years of the Jansen settlement, it's a lot of thirty-four thousand focused in dealing with opioids, so that's, it's good news that we're getting the funding, and it's bad news that we have to get this funding in order to deal with it, but more will come, because there's several settlements that are still in, in process. I noted previously, another report, since I've been spending time working with Bo on the, his ARPA funding for fifty-five thousand, he's been a little taken aback by the amount of work that he has to fill out, so there's been a lot of work with Bo to keep him moving in on points, so I've been aiding him in getting that's going. Last thing I have for you is, earlier this evening, Charter Vision met, to finalize where they are with a draft rewrite, or changes, they're gonna have their public hearing December seventh, to get public feedback, they're proposing revisions, so what you have here is their current working draft in redline form, this is an unofficial version, not filed with the town clerk, that sets off a kind of timelines with the town council, but this is just to let you see where they're at, and you can square this, see that they did respond to the charge the council, the council gave them, so they will have their, the next step would be, they would have their public hearing on the seventh, after that, the document would have to be filed with the town clerk, and then you have forty-five days in which you guys have to have a public hearing, so we're trying to talk about calendar this evening for when they would file at the town clerk's office, and then, sort of, maybe early January, the council would have to have its public hearing, and then decide where you go from there, with the charter. And that's it.
Thank you, Carl. Questions, comments, concerns, anything?
I have a question about the budget, so I guess it's our local businesses who have approached Courtney, is that how it works?
So it's been flagged as an issue by CER, for navigation issues, so they have been engaging Army Corps, certain local Army Corps presence, to get, this summer was some mapping done to determine where you've got navigation hazards, and that, townside, I approached Representative Courtney's staff in order to see how we can move things forward, they reached out to the Army Corps legislative liaison, and that, that sort of got us the letter, that's the agenda back there, so we have the support of the congressman on it, and Army Corps needs to go through their annual work plan and decide how much cash they have that they can free up, something to support with Clinton, so the minimal ask is, deal with the hotspots of the immediate navigation hazards, maybe with light, maybe in one or two years out, where they can plan it accordingly, the bigger, the bigger church of the harbor, make sure that it still remains that, obviously, the arena operators have a strong interest in, make sure the harbor still can work, and their business has a go of it, we have an interest in it also, so it's, it's a good partnership.
The arena's on Indian River, just south of the bridge, they have trouble getting out on tides, on on tides, have you ever heard Chris Hurd?
I haven't heard anything. I haven't heard anything about that. That would be more... That would be a state regulated project.
Okay.
That's not...
Okay, that's not the same.
That wouldn't be Army Corps, that would be a different... I don't know, that would be regulated. It would be a different project. All right, anybody else? Okay, before the ceiling falls down, we'll move on to item 11, council discussions. If they have anything to discuss at this time.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw something out there on the board. I know it'd be a little difficult probably for Kerry, maybe Chris, but maybe just think about the thought of having our meeting at 6:00 instead of 7:00 next year? I know the police commission has just moved up... Well, are you 6:30? I mean, you know, I know the police commission who had been meeting at 6:00 is now going, I believe, move even up earlier. So they're entertaining that thought. I heard that Tuesday, Monday night, so started ringing bells in my head that, you know, just so that people like Paul could get out of here a little sooner, you don't have to hang around. But I know it would be difficult probably for Kerry at school.
Not for me, I'm back, I'm back with them.
Chris? Tell it honestly, Chris, if it's a burden, just say burden.
It's hard to think through, like for work, it would be fine, for sports after school, coaching. 6:00 is probably tough, maybe 6:30 would be...
All right. Just when we think about it, because you...
It'll be on our agenda for setting the schedule for next month.
Yeah, that's what I mean, we're going to settle it, so if you've given you a couple places to think about it, if it sounds good, if not, no big deal.
Most of my workers will know that.
Okay. You want to talk about it the next day?
Done. Okay.
Anybody else?
I think Carl, for moving the person along.
You got to make him smile.
He does a lot. He does a lot.
All right. All right, item number 12, town council committee liaison reports.
Could we get back to 11?
What do you need? Oh, I'm sorry.
You and I had a discussion, I think, on election day about charter and possibly adding something about attendance.
Yeah, I don't know if that's too late at this point.
Is that too late today?
Just, I mean, the conversation was attendance at council meetings because it becomes an issue. And...
It's an issue of the law?
Right. So I mean, it was just an issue of... In terms of the process, it would be if that's an issue the council has, the concern about, you should go to their public hearing on sound.
Okay.
And have somebody say that so that they can incorporate it and discuss it amongst themselves before they make the final, they're filing with the town clerk. Otherwise, you would have to then consult with them. So after they file it and make it, set the wheels in motion with the town clerk's office, if there's an addition or change you want, then you'd have to consult with them, and they would have to deliberate over it anyways. They could always say no. And that gets to an issue of whether the council wants to continue to perform with charter revision without that issue, or whether it's critical and the whole thing kind of crashes because you don't have that in there.
It isn't a tricky...
I don't think it's a tricky...
It's tricky.
The whole thing will be tricky. So if it's an issue, then it's something we talk about. It's easier for them to discuss it, and then I've got to get some advice and direction from the town attorney or flesh out the concept and to language it as more clear than what we had in the last meeting. All right, so public hearing. You got to go. December 7th. You got to go public hearing. It's public hearing, you got to bring up your...
September 7th. September 9th.
September 7th.
Day of the 5th. All right.
All right, anybody else for 11 before we go to 12? All right, number 12, town council committee liaison reports. Is there anybody that can report?
I noticed that Carl was working out with...
Yes, they made a decision that they would go forward and go through a process to give the EDCs some correction. Hopefully, we'll keep it on point. Excellent. Anybody else?
Police commission two nights ago, as usual, their budget ran on for the police, and the communication with one will be better now that we have this individual working and working out very well. So they're at full speed. The only thing that I have to note is that the dog program is in force. They've got a dog, it's off to school for three weeks now with handler. And just so everybody will understand that program through donations is fully funded for at least four and probably five years. And that... So that's a quick thing. And the program, the SRO officer will be the individual that has the dog, and you will have it full-time, 24 hours. It'll be up at the school with him. The school has agreed to that, no problem. They think it's a great idea. And then, of course, he'll be on call for whenever he needs to be. Service dog, in case people are wondering, it's, you know, it's not a canine opioid dog or anything like that. It's one to help people in times of disaster and stuff to be empathetic, I guess, or whatever. Commoder, I guess.
Commoder. It's an official term.
Commoder. They make these up all the time.
Clinton now has a commoder.
They make them up all the time. So anyway.
How long do the service dogs...
A what?
How long do they last?
Well, I don't know.
Can I just say that they just took an officer out of patrol and out of his job and sent him off for three weeks of handler training, right? That was the cost incurred by the department to implement this...
I tell you, Carol, I didn't pick it up that way. What I heard was that the SRO officer is leaving the school.
Who has a job with the schools.
Right. And he's going with the dogs, and that they would cover him by whatever means, but I did not hear the word overtime, quite frankly. I can investigate that for you if you'd like for the next meeting.
That was always my concern. I was new, it was the personnel costs involved in this program, not the dog.
Right.
Not where the dog was coming from, the personnel costs, and the fact that that dog has an availability situation also. There was, God forbid, some terrible calamity in town, they would want that dog reported, the officer would be there, you're talking, you know? That was always my concern with this program, was the ancillary costs.
But they're also, they say it's fully funded.
For the dog.
For the dog. You know, the program, you got to keep the dog, purchasing of the dog and everything else, food.
Not the personnel costs.
Yeah, the food and all that. I mean, Carol brings up a very valid point, you know? Some of the personnel...
And that's what I had asked the chief for, that we would not receive that. So there we go.
Anybody else?
I wanted to add, he's actually tested you.
Yep.
That was very interesting. It really was. Every minute.
Interesting.
Yes, there was a property, both of them had to do with water side, and their decisions were very interesting. I thought that their decision to... There was one property that could not give open space, and so in lieu of open space, they were discussing the dollar amount, and the commission decided to go for the most, the highest possible dollar amount and asked this developer to put in one thousand dollars and move out of open space, which will go to purchase open space. And then there was another case of developing there. You know what? I thought that the commission did a great job treating it slowly and methodically and asked for more information. So they lost.
Anybody else? All right. Here, then we'll go to look for a motion to go to executive session. We've discussed real estate, anybody who would like to call second? Second discussion. All in favor? Okay, we're back from executive session, and we'll move on to item number 14, which is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Opposed, abstained? Thank you all again. Have a good night.
Thank you.